All right, we will call to order the special meeting of the city council, regular meeting of the public financing agency for Tuesday, August seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one. This is our open session. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gardner.
Present.
Councilmember Pye.
Here.
Councilmember Nunes. Mayor Protem Betz.
Present.
And Mayor Mattis.
Present. Uh, do we have any public comments? Oh, I'm sorry. Pledge of allegiance. Um, we're gonna bypass pledge allegiance kind of uh on the on the Zoom special meeting if everybody's okay with that. Uh, what we will do is move to the city attorney's report on closed session and Ms. Marah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We have one reportable um action item. Council voted five oh to initiate a litigation uh at when the time comes proper parties will be served.
Thank you very much. Uh, we will now go to public comments. We're in public comments.
No, we do not.
All right. Uh, we have one public hearing tonight. It is um the public hearing to approve uh insurance of issuance of the public safety and other facility improvement bonds. Um, our finance director, Mr. Buckheim, is gonna give the staff report. Uh, these items have been bifurcated. Uh, just so when he finishes his report, you understand that there is a resolution that has to be approved by the Desert Hot Springs Public Financing Authority, and then there'd be one that will revert back to the city council. These issues have been bifurcated. The first issue that he'll speak to will be on the fourteen million dollars on the bonds for uh capital expenditures and then the one million dollar bond on purchasing of a possible um animal hospital and or he'll explain that situation. Uh, those have been bifurcated and these these issues uh will come back to us if approved individually, and he'll explain that also. Mr. But uh, how come did I take away all your thunder?
No, not at all. You but you made it easier for me. Thank you. So I don't have to talk as much. Um, thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening. I we have a um uh, the little short little slideshow of, um, I think, uh, Roberta can bring that up, please.
We have a Roberto.
Can you see the slide?
No.
No, do you want me to try to share my screen?
Just give me one second. Sorry.
It is allowing for she as screen sharing, Jeffrey, if you try it.
There we go. Okay, so this is the twenty twenty-one public facilities bond. Uh, the next slide, please. They consist of the twenty-two-one tax exempt uh tax exempt lease lease revenue bonds for new fire station ninety-eight, fire station thirty-seven improvements, uh, new police bill, police annex building, public police building improvements, Carl May Center Improvement for total projects uh fourteen million. On our next slide, please, is the uh twenty-two taxable uh lease revenue bonds uh for the either and for one million dollars, the animal hospital purchase. If that purchase is not viable, these funds could be used for other eligible projects within the city. Um, or the funds uh pro bond proceeds can be refunded at two years um at the first, which would be the first opportunity paying an estimated about thirty-three thousand, that should be thirty-three thousand in interest until the bonds are called. And in the meantime, those bonds could those proceeds could be deposited in an interest-bearing account until use or refunded. Um, and when the income derived from that would kind of offset the interest costs. Um, the next slide shows our estimated financing. Um, just doing the fifteen million dollars for the tax-exempt bonds, no um payoff. We'd have an annual debt service payment of over eight hundred eight thousand dollars. And in uh average interest rate or estimated interest rate to be two point ninety-eight percent. Uh, if we do a the tax exempt, one million tax or fourteen million tax exempt, one million taxable bonds, but no early payoff. Our annual debt service payment would be over eight hundred eleven thousand dollars um with an interest rate of estimated interest rate of two point nine nine percent. And if we do it, uh, the tax exempt and taxable bonds with an early payoff, uh, the annual debt service would be eleven, eight hundred eleven thousand seven hundred seventy-six dollars, so like about seven hundred dollar increase. With an it's slightly higher interest of three point oh one percent. On the next slide, I'll have a summary of our staff report recommendations. So this the city council will be acting as city council and as the Desert Hot Springs Public Financing Authority. Uh, this is a similar process to when the city at council acts as the board for the successor agency. When you're doing approval for the ROPS or other items for the former redevelopment agency. They bet there's a uh resolution from the city to enter into the lease financing and to authorize the public financing authority to issue the tax-exempt bonds for the facility improvements for fourteen million dollars projects. And then an additional and then a resolution of the financing authority to to issue those taxing bonds. So that's, you'll be voting on on uh, make a motions and voting on those two items. The next two would be a resolution of the city to enter into lease financing and allow authorize the financing authority to issue the tax taxable bonds for the one million dollar project. And then the next one would be a resolution for the financing authority to issue those taxable bonds for the one million dollar. One million dollars. Um, and the next slide, we have changes for the taxable bond resolutions. Oh. What is that? The council will need to verbally expand the scope of the resolutions in order to have um the option of using the one million dollars in in bond proceeds for other capital projects. Uh, adoption with verbal amendments. So the record will reflect that approval such changes as needed to provide that proceeds of the financing can be used for capital improvements as approved by council. It says but by staff, but it should be approved by council. And that is the presentation, and we have Michael Bush with Urban Futures and David Twama with Jones Hall here for additional questions.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Get the screen back here so I can see everybody. There we go. Um, at this time, we have any questions for staff before I open the public hearing. Yes, Russ.
Yeah, slide four. We're showing some numbers anywhere from eight eighty, eight oh eight, six forty-five to eight eleven, seven seventy-six, varying interest rates. Are those cumulative or just singular options? I'm trying to assert assess the total cost per year on this debt service.
So those are singular options. So we have different, three different scenarios. One for just doing the tax-exempt bonds would be the eight oh eight uh without an early payoff. One scenario doing tax-exempt and taxable bonds without early payoff would be eight eleven oh fifty-four. And one scenario would be in tax-exempt and taxable bonds with the two-year early payoff would be eight eleven seven seventy-six.
Now, these segregated out for just the fire station and the police station, or does it include everything in that those numbers?
That includes everything in those numbers. So if if the council does not approve the taxable bonds or the one million dollars, then the actual annual payments would be less.
Do so. Trying to figure out what the options are without everything mixed together. Um, so it's eight oh eight, six forty-five to eight eleven, seven seventy-six. Um, is the range right now, including the extra million dollars, correct?
Yes.
And that's per year?
Yes.
And so the three options, can you explain those to me? The first option is we can't pay it back early. And how many? What's the term of the the note?
So the first option would be just the tax-exempt bonds. It'd be, you know, for fifteen million dollars in projects, it'd be the um uh, the normal term of the note, I believe, would be around thirty uh thirty years, but that would not be eligible for the animal hospital purchase.
Thirty years and what's and so do we know what the total interest paid over that thirty years is?
Uh, no, I don't have. Jeffrey.
What was that?
Tom, Tom Jacobs on the line. He may have it right in front of him.
I don't have to have it instantly. If somebody could get it to us during this discussion, that'd be great.
I'll get it for you, Russ.
Okay, and the um. Alright, so that's the first one. It's just taxable, can't repay it. You're entering into thirty-year deal, no early payoff, right?
Correct.
But we could maybe at some point in time sell those later or not?
They come with a ten-year call, Councilmember Betz, which means you could pay them off in year ten early if you'd like or refinance them.
At two point nine eight percent, my guess is ten years from now, we're gonna be happy to have those at two point nine eight percent. There's not gonna be a better deal. That be your guess?
Possible. That's possible. But as you know, Russell, the further you go out, the greater the risk. So in ten years, it'll only be twenty-year financing, and you still might have an opportunity to refinance for a lower rate. It just depends on where the market is.
Yeah, I'm remembering back to the days when home mortgage was fourteen percent.
We might, we might be back there in a few years.
Yeah. Um, all right. And then the second option is what?
Section, the second option will be doing the one million of tax-exempt bonds and the remainder a taxable, but I'm sorry. Fourteen million tax-exempt bonds, one million taxable bonds, but we do not have the do not have the two-year early payoff.
Okay, and what's the third one?
And then the third one will be the same tax-exempt and taxable bonds with the two-year early payoff.
Like so, why is, why isn't there one for, you know, the first option and then a section option just being the separate million dollars? Or these, do we have to vote for these together?
So these are just estimates of the cost. You would be um voting on first doing the tax-exempt bonds. And then next you'd be voting on whether you want to do the taxable bonds. So you'd be doing the bonds first for fourteen million dollars of projects. And then if you'd like to add on the one million dollars of the taxable taxable bonds, then you'd be voting on that.
Okay, so the, the. Hey, guys, quiet. Family, sorry. Let's zoom at home. Um, so the by putting in the one million dollars, then we have to, we lose some advantage because we can't do the one million with the first option, correct?
No, you can. That would be the first option. First scenario would be the entire fifteen million.
Okay. And why, why do I want to do the higher interest rate? What's the advantage of that?
It's taxable rate, Councilmember Betz. So in order to acquire a building, which you're not sure what the end use will be, whether the city will operate it and own it or sell it to an operator, it's it's uh necessary for us to structure the transaction as taxable. So what you're saying is two series of bonds is one of the options, and that option would be the fourteen million dollars for your public facilities, police, fire, Carl May, et cetera. It's tax-exempt. And a one million dollars for the uh animal hospital or another purchase or capital projects. So tonight, if the direction of the council is to move forward with an assumption of buying the animal hospital, we would recommend the taxable structure to give the council entire flexibility of how to use that facility now and in the future. If the decision is made to uh move forward with fifteen million dollars of tax-exempt proceeds, that is also the option Jeffrey's talking about as option one.
Okay, so what you're suggesting is if I want to do the one million dollar additional for the animal hospital, I've got to bind up the other fourteen million uh in a less advantaged, less advantageous scenario. If I go with just the first scenario, that doesn't include the one million, correct?
It does. I think scenario one is everything as tax-exempt.
Okay, so were there any restrictions on that? Do I have the, I don't have the, but I don't have flexibility. What flexibility do I lose?
Private activity of that of a building you buy for the animal uh hospital. Meaning the city would have to operate the animal hospital and own the building. If you sell it to an operator down the road, which I think has been part of the options you've been looking at, you would need to structure the transaction as taxable.
All right, so my last question is, why not just present this as we know what we're gonna do with the police station, we know what we're gonna do with the fire station or and the whatever else is in there. Let's just do that one that way and then come back with a separate one. Why is it intermingled like that? And and it seems like it's muddying the waters to me.
Are you referring to having two separate financings, Mr. Betz?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the reason why it's being presented as one is to save on the cost of issuance of the financing.
How much is that?
So you're this op, well, I'm gonna I'm gonna get to that point. So this option assumes that everything is done together, and you get the efficiency of bringing together the whole team. If you were gonna borrow a million dollars as a standalone under a ten-year uh structure, which is what's proposed before you tonight, I'm gonna guess based on my experience in working on these transactions, you would probably spend about fifty thousand dollars minimum just to access the financing. So by doing it this way, you're saving a significant amount of cost of issuance for the financing.
Yeah, what's the added cost over the thirty years of the difference between two point nine eight percent and three point one percent?
Fourteen thousand dollars.
Fourteen thousand and what did you say the other number was?
Fifty thousand, just a cost of issuance plus the additional interest cost.
Yeah, but I wouldn't have the fourteen or the fifty if I didn't do the other one, right?
If you took, I think you're you're mixing a couple of things up, Councilmember Betz. So tonight.
I didn't want to. I understand we're doing it. I didn't want to, but that's okay.
I I know, I know. Let me, let me, uh, let me break it down a little bit differently. It's I think I know what you're what you're trying to get to. So the structure that's being proposed tonight, it makes the assumption that the um council will take one action. It's the most cost-effective and efficient action to finance both the taxes and taxable items that you're discussing tonight. If we were to bifurcate the two and have two separate actions, it would cost you fifty thousand dollars more, I believe, to take them separately.
Okay, but if we, but if we didn't, if we just did the two, we'd have a lower cost. If we just did the two items, the fire station and the police station, and did that financing, we'd have a lower cost and and.
Well, yeah, because you're financing one million dollars less.
Yeah, and because, well, there's also a higher interest rate, but because we're combining it there, we're taking fif- fourteen thousand, fourteen million and making it more expensive because we're including the animal hospital in the mix. Is that correct? If I, if if I go out to do this deal and I include the animal hospital, I'm paying more on the fourteen million than I would be. Was everybody there? Did you guys all freeze up?
No, no, we're here. We're just listening to you. But the animal hospital, it just real quick, just to correct you, the animal hospital or other projects once that comes to the city council.
Okay, so and I I appreciate that correction. I'm sorry if I misspoke. Um, and I understand that's what's being talked about. I'm just, you know, I'm being careful with my words. But the bottom line is this other option, option, whatever you want to call it, this other option is costing, is causing us to have the police station and fire station cost us more money.
That's not correct.
Yeah, the interest rates are higher.
No, it's not. What you're being asked, what you're being asked tonight, Russell, is of it's a tax-exempt refinancing for those facilities. It has no bearing on it. It is not a the inclusion of the animal hospital does not increase the cost for those two facilities.
But if I want to go with the lowest cost option, the two point nine eight percent interest rate, eight hundred eight thousand six hundred forty-five annual cost, I want to go with that one. I ha- I'm stuck on that animal hospital deal.
And it's not any of that. I think your lowest cost, if I understand the slide correctly that Jeffrey put up, your lowest cost option is for fourteen million and would exclude the animal hospital. It's fourteen million.
He said he didn't have that slide up there.
When when debt service goes up, Russell, to option two, I think that's when you start adding it in as a tax-exempt item. Option three adds the animal hospital to the police and fire facilities as a taxable item.
All right, so up then my last question is option one does not include the animal hospital, but the other two do. That's what you just said.
I believe so. Jeffrey, can we put that slide back up?
And Mike, it's Dave. We're bond counsel on the transaction. The documents contemplate two series of bonds, one taxable, one tax-exempt. Each of those would have a different interest rate. So the fourteen million would have, you know, a a lower interest rate than the one million, and the fourteen million is a separate series of bonds. And Mike, I I think the um where the confusion is, is the first scenario there, and someone can correct me if I'm wrong. I think that was the fourteen million only, and it did not include the animal hospital. And that's why you have the jump in the debt service because the second scenario does. Someone could correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's the way it is.
Would it help if the note said fourteen million, police station, fire station, whatever else is included in that? And then the second option would have fifteen million uh police station, fire station, animal hospital, correct? Is that the way it would be?
No, 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 no. Let me, let me walk you through it, Russells, now that I see it in front of you.
Describe the notes.
Option one, yeah, o- option one, Russell, is to acquire the animal hospital and to do the capital improvements you've talked about for police and fire and Carl May, all tax-exempt. Item number two makes the assumption that one million dollars of of that acquisition is for the animal hospital on a taxable basis. Item number three is the is the similar structure to item number two, with the exception of a short call, so you can def- defees the bonds if you don't use the money. So all three, all three, let me, let me finish. Sorry, Councilmember Betz. All three include all the facilities. The first one is all tax-exempt, which means that the not eligible for the hospital means you can't buy it and then sell the hospital for private activity or use it for private activity. Because I'm looking at the total payments amounts, the fact that they're all the same tells me all three facilities are in there, police, fire, animal hospital.
So my last question, then that clarified it. Thank you very much. We're gonna be asked to vote on option scenario one, two, or three, correct?
I believe so.
Okay, thank you. That answers my question. Thank you.
Mayor, if I may. I believe staff recommendation is using option three. Is that correct, Jeffrey?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. All right, I need to screen back up so I can see who wants to speak. I'll go to uh Mr. Our uh Councilmember Pye. Any questions for staff?
Not at this time.
Uh, Mr. Nunes, any questions for staff?
No, not right now.
Mr. Gardner, any questions for staff before I open the public hearing?
No staff questions, thanks.
All right, we'll do item number three, the recommendations to open the public hearing at this time and take public testimony. Do we have any public testimonies?
No, we do not.
I have no one on Zoom. I'm going through my screen. I don't see anybody stepping in, raising their hands. Uh, we will close the public hearing at this time, and then we'll go to city council discussion. I'll start back over with uh Ms. Pye.
Um, I want to make a motion for A, B. Staff recommendation, A, B, C, and D with the uh amendment for the animal hospital.
Yeah, Ms. Marah, do we have to take them separately as the authority, as the as the, what are they calling us? The finance authority, or can we do them all as once, one?
Um, it's my understanding that you would have to do, uh, the financing authority would have to take its motion, and the city council would have to take that its motion. But I would actually defer to uh Dave Mama on that. I don't know if I'm incorrect. I thought that they both had to be separate.
Yeah, that would be the best practice in what we most typically see.
Ms. Pye, would you revise your motion to, you can actually combine items uh A and item C, correct? Yes.
Yes.
And then we'd have, okay, your motion is for item A and C, staff recommendations. Um, do I have a second before we get to council comments? Yes, Mr. Gardner, do you have, do you second it? I will go to council comments at this point. I'll start with Mr. Gardner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I think uh I want to thank uh uh Mr. Bush and his team for an excellent presentation of Jeffrey as well. Um, I cannot, uh, I'm 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 surprised at the at the interest rate being as low as it is, and and uh I I I'm hesitant to push it out any further. I do like option C with the uh with the early payoff if we are in a financial position to do that, and uh it'll save us a fair amount of money, and uh, I I think it's a good package overall. Uh, I like all of the things that we are spending it on, and there are much-needed improvements in our city, and uh, I am looking forward to supporting it.
And Ms. Pye, just to confirm your motion, that was option C, which which has the two-year early payoff?
I'm sorry, option C, which?
Option C was the two-year early payoff. It was a couple thousand dollars higher on the payment each year?
Yes.
Okay, uh, Mr. Nunes?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, you know, I I I still can't wrap my brain and after thinking about this, thinking about this over and over again, and looking at public comments on on social media about what our residents feel about this pet hospital. I want to go on the record to say I we really, really need the fire department. We really need the police department uh for the funding. But the way this is tied in with the pet hospital, I I it's just, it's a shame. It's a shame that this is even being considered after all the the loose ends that are still tied with it. As council member, com- council member Gardner mentioned earlier that wouldn't want to reflect anything bad on the city. Well, this is one of them, and I I just can't see myself to to vote for for this, and I hope that this doesn't pass tonight. It's gonna, you know, really reflect bad on what we do now in the future uh decisions in the city as we're growing. So I, that's all, no.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Mayor Protem Betz. Here on mute.
Okay, I can, you know, I can see how the vote's gonna go on this one, so I don't belabor this too much, but given the importance of the um items that are uh included in this, I have to at least make sure that it's clear of the record of, you know, my views on this. And the police station, you know, we we authorized and are putting in dispatch, which the community clearly wants dispatch here. That's taking up space in the police station. So we very much need that extra space uh for the police, and I am very much in favor of that. On the east end of the city, our residents have suffered there for what? Long, long time. Every ever since I've been at council, I've heard about how much we need that police station or that fire station over there. And I can see that working as well. So I'm all on board for that as well. But now I've got to explain why it looks like I'm gonna have to vote no on this one is because we're tying this into something that I consider just an extremely, I I'm just, I it for the life of me, I can't figure it out. I cannot understand this. Now, there was a poll that went out and very unscientific, but it's a pretty good indication based on some pretty heavy response that for a million dollars, what would people like to see in the community? And, you know, the top of the list was a what was it? It was a indoor arcade fun area that gets kids somewhere to go out of the sun. And that was the top vote getter. And then there was something like a splash fountain akin to what Cathedral City has. All of those are doable for a million dollars, um, probably less, but um and then way down the list was the animal hospital. And I suspect if people knew that the animal hospital was gonna cost a million dollars, if they had that detail, it would be even further down the list. There was a whole bunch of other stuff that was included. Now, granted, that's all not scientific, but I can't believe that, hold on a second, sorry. I can't believe that um anybody is gonna be, you know, that I just, it just, it just flabbergasted me that that this deal's coming along. This is probably one of the worst proposals I think I've ever seen come to this council. And I want an animal hospital as much as anybody else does, but there's all kinds of ways to do it without spending a million dollars. So again, I I think the vote's gonna go the way it goes, but I wanted to be clear on the record, maybe a little more long-winded than Councilmember Nunes. Good job on your brevity there, Councilmember Nunes. Um, but I'm gonna concur with you that I I can't vote with this as long as it's tied to the animal hospital, as much as it pains me to have to vote no on a fire station, much-needed fire station and police station. This animal hospital is such a bad deal that I cannot go on record as supporting it in any way, and I might just leave it at that. I don't want to go any further.
Thank you. Before Mr. Gardner, I'm going to make my comments. Um, yeah, I I understand what individuals are saying um from their standpoint and opinion. But so that we don't twist the facts and then we put the facts out there to the public in general that if you were listening to this item, it was one million dollars that could be spent on an animal hospital or other projects in our community. So let's say the animal hospital doesn't cost us that much, or we choose not to purchase that animal hospital when it's when the deal is brought forth to us, that gives us a million dollars to spend maybe on the splash pad or a park. You don't buy arcades and and do and do that type of stuff. That's just, that needs to be relayed to the public. We don't, we don't do that as a city. We don't run those types of businesses. We never have, never will. There's not a nonprofit out there to run an arcade, so um, you're not gonna do that, and and arcades don't make money. We know that from the retails uh that we've we've gone out and looked. So uh, when it comes to that type of stuff, I think there's a lot of good suggestions on there. I saw three or four on social media that I thought were good suggestions. So let's say we don't spend a million dollars on animal hospital. Um, because it just the deal can't work out. So that gives us an extra million dollars to go fix up a skate park or or build a pocket park or something. Who knows? So I think it's an opportunity with the bonds being as low as they are today to be able to put that into there. And yes, it's gonna raise our payment by three or four thousand dollars a year. But it's an opportunity, and if we don't use that million dollars, then we give it back or put it back. but it's an opportunity. And if we don't use that million dollars, then we give it back or put it back in a way that we can sell it back, or however that works in the finance world, and Mike Bush can, can do that for us. But to sit here and say it's the worst deal in the world, I just, I disagree with that. I think it's an opportunity. We haven't committed to an animal hospital. We, we, it is part of the discussion, and there is negotiations going on for that animal hospital, but we don't know what that price will be, or if that'll even, even happen. The city council hasn't had that before us. So really didn't want to get into the individual projects today. This is really about the bonds themselves and just selling them. I understand the position that individuals want to take, and that's fine. Mr. Gardner, you're next, and I got two other hands raised.
I just needed to clarify something real quick, too. Do, Jennifer, do we need to read in the language of adding that in there into Ms. Pye's motion that's before us? She's just, she just mentioned with the added language, but the added language on the slide said staff, and we need to change that to city council. So would it behoove us to read the verbiage into the record so that we have that, or do we not need to do that?
I would go ahead and read the verbiage into the record because it's my understanding that it was not included. And I'm looking at the, the staff recommendations right now in the staff recommendation. Is that correct, Jeffrey?
Yes, right now it's not in the, it's not listed in the resolution, and that has to be verbally added to the, verbally amended to the adoption of the resolution. Gary, why don't you ask for the friendly amendment?
Now, let me, let me read that in. We would, we would add the extra language into the motion that says, with such changes as are needed to provide that the proceeds of the financing can be used for capital improvements as approved by the city council.
Ms. Pye, is that friendly?
Yes.
All right, so the motion has been changed to that. Anything else you'd like to add, Mr. Gardner, before I go to Ms. Pye?
I would, I would echo what you had said, Mr. Mayor, too. We don't know if the animal hospital is going to make it through the whole process, and while we're at it, let's go ahead and borrow that extra million dollars so that we do have something, we can use that for, for other projects to benefit the community. And the, the beauty of that is, if, if the animal hospital sale doesn't go through, we have the, we have the money in our pocket to be able to spend it on those things. So what I would hope my fellow council members would realize is that by supporting this, all we're doing is, 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 is authorizing the sale of the bonds. And if and when the animal hospital purchase comes before us, we can have the debate on whether it is a good deal or not. And if it's not, it doesn't pass. If it is, then it does. And if we choose not to, to, to purchase the animal hospital at that time, we have another million dollars that we can use for some other project. So I recognize the strong feelings by my fellow council members that the animal hospital is not necessarily a good purchase. I disagree with that, but I respect their, their decision-making process on it. But I wanted to just make sure that we all stayed focused on the fact that we're not choosing at this point whether or not to purchase the animal hospital. We're just choosing whether or not to finance up to that fifteen million dollars. And if we don't purchase the animal hospital, which will be a separate debate down the road, then, then we can choose another project. That's it.
Ms. Pye?
Okay. The mayor had said previously that he would slow down on the purchase of the animal hospital. That is why I said to put the amendment in there, which says we can do something else if the specific hospital is not a proposition. Because it wasn't in the amendment. I mean, it wasn't in the resolution. Adding the amendment, it is in the resolution. It was noted in the staff report and very other things, but not in the resolution. So that is why I did that. And at that point, when the mayor said that he would slow down, Mr. Betts said that was amicable to him. I'm done.
Mr. Nunez?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think you're absolutely right that the million dollars, I, I, I understood that the million dollars could be used for everything. So then why put it in the agenda that it's going to be primarily for a pet hospital? If, I mean, I'm, I can go full theme and, and vote yes on this. If the verbiage on the agenda would say, reflect that the million dollars could be used for capital improvements, but there's a pet hospital, veterinarian hospital in the agenda. So I would be more than happy to, to be that fourth vote. But realistically, I'm going to give you a timeline. I think we're just procrastinating and waiting and waiting the owners of the pet hospital to get their legal status correct and fixed, and whatever they need to do, then the sale will take place. It doesn't take a genius to figure out what, what's, what house is going to work and how it's going to play out, and this is why I'm voting no.
Fair enough. Mr. Betts?
Yeah, I just want to correct the record. There was no slowing down of this process that I became amicable to that taking place. That's just not the way things shook out. What happened was that it was discovered that we don't know that the owner of this property even has the legal standing to sell it. And at present, and according to our city attorney, notice that was sent to every council member, they do not have standing to sell this right now. They're under investigation by the Attorney General for failure to file their nonprofit filings as they're supposed to, and for other issues that came up regarding whether or not funds were used properly, and their status is in limbo. So that is what slowed it down, and that always would have slowed it down unless we had plowed into going ahead and purchasing from something. And I want to get on the record now, I've had communication with the attorney, and I don't think there's any problem with it being discussed here, is that we need to make sure that the parties that are representing, that they have authority to sell this property, do indeed have authority to sell this property. So now also, I'm going to just couple of the questions, and I want to get on this because we know the way the vote's going to go on this one.
Okay, we know, we know where the, we know that you know where the vote's going to go, but no one in the public knows where the vote's going to go until it happens. So I appreciate if you didn't say that you know where the vote's going to go when it hasn't happened yet.
Well, you know, Scott, we consider, we're in the audience, we pretty much know this where you go, but okay, I'll, I'll grant you that point. Let me just go ahead. Just can't help. You got me weighted on baited breath to see if you're going to vote with me. Okay, there we go. I'm holding out hope on that one. So anyhow, if this wasn't about the animal hospital, as was purported earlier, animal hospital, animal hospital, animal hospital wouldn't be appearing in the agenda. This would be about funding capital improvements. And we're talking about tying up a million dollars, paying interest on it, on the hope that somebody will finally be able to get their act together and actually have ability to sell that facility. And, and so everybody, the clear intent is to include the animal hospital in this. I'm a little disappointed. I thought we were going to go into this meeting separating this. It doesn't look like that happened. It's fine. I, you know, I'm to grips with the fact that sometimes I don't win them. And we'll see. I'm holding out hope. Maybe we're going to get a, a correct vote on this one. I don't know, but we'll see. But anyhow, Mr. Mayor, I just, you know, we always have the option to do other things, but we're plowing ahead on a very uncertain deal. One that is a very, very, very costly deal that could be had for a whole lot less money than what we're talking about doing. So anyhow, I, I just, I don't, I could go on for a long, long time, and I promise I wouldn't. So I'm going to keep it there. I think we're probably time for the vote.
I'm sure it is, but since everybody else had their final thoughts, I'm going to give you mine, and then we'll go to the vote. I thank everybody for their opinions, and your opinions are important because you represent the community. But they're not always correct. I'm not, I'm not saying, oh, my opinion's always correct. What we do is we vote on what we feel is important for our community. The reason that the animal hospital is listed here is because the last vote that was taken by the city council, three to two, voted that the animal hospital would be purchased with one, up to a million dollars if needed and/or other projects. That was a direction to staff. Our staff is very competent and very smart. And we have a lot of smart people in the room today, making decisions based on the, the direction by the city council in the last meeting. The individual projects will come back to us and be debated, even if it was in the fourteen million dollars when the police station comes. And we'll be debating the contract on that. When the fire station comes, the remodel of the car may, and then so forth. So when and if an animal hospital is moved forward, then that will come forward for the decision of council, and if it's not viable, then the council has given direction today, if it continues to move down this path, for staff to be able to look at other options based on community needs. That's what the facts are on the table today. So I appreciate everybody's opinion. I made a mistake on when I was getting clarity. The A and B is actually us acting as the city council. B and D would be the public financing authority. So the motion on the table by Ms. Pye is to take items A and C as the city council to approve option three, which was presented to us by staff, including the language that Mr. Gardner added. So right now I'll go to a roll call vote.
I have a, Mr. Ray, I just want to have additional quick comment, if I might, please. Don't be very brief.
No, there's no more comments.
I have, I want to ask, I want to ask that the, I provided a packet to the city attorney. At the last meeting, I provided a packet to the city attorney, and I would like that to be included in the official record of this proceeding so that if anybody goes and searches this agenda item, that they will have all those documents available to them. And I'd like to ask the city attorney, take all those, that packet that I supplied to her, and make sure it's supplied to every council member in total. So that's it. That's all I got.
Thank you for your opinion, and we'll see if the city attorney can accommodate you on that request. It's a request, not a direction. With that said, we'll move to the votes as of today, or as of right now. We'll take a roll call vote on the motion.
Mayor, Mayor, if I may, if you're doing A and C, that is for the fourteen million.
No, no, no. A, the resolution on the agenda is, there's three, there's four resolutions on the agenda, correct?
Jeffrey, can you share your screen and bring up the four?
So A and, A and C is, A is the fourteen million, C is the one million, and these are the, the, those are the resolutions for the city. B and D, B is the fourteen million, D is the one million, and those are the resolutions for the financing authority.
Okay, thank you.
So taking A and C is okay at this point, with option three as a direction, correct?
Do we have to, if I can ask one more clarified question, doesn't the financing authority have to approve it first, and then the city council approves it?
This is Dave Fama from Jones Hall, where the bond council, no, the, the order isn't particular there. It can be either order. The important thing was that the public hearing took place, which it did, so we're in good shape to go in any order.
Thank you, David.
Sure.
All right, we have a motion on the table, A and C with the option three, with the language added. Roll call, please, Ms. Turner.
Councilmember Gardner?
I.
Councilmember Pye?
I.
Councilmember Nunes?
No.
Mayor Protem Betts?
No.
Mayor Mattis?
Hi. Oh, now we'll need a resolution. Mr. Betts, you don't need to interject. Thank you.
I didn't interject anything.
I'm sorry, your mic was on when you did, so I was just asking you not to.
I don't know what I did.
Are you done? Thank you very much. The next resolution, or next motion on the table would be to take items B and D. Mr. Gardner or Ms. Pye, would you like to copy the motion that was on the table or make a separate motion?
If we can take the previous motion and apply it to these two items, including the additional language that I read in the first motion, I'm happy to move that.
That would be as the public financing authority at this point. Do I have a second?
Second.
Can you take the screen off? Can you remove the screen from the sharing? Thank you very much. I have a motion and a second. Is there any comments? All right, we'll move to a vote, public, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Gardner?
I.
Councilmember Pye?
I.
Councilmember Nunes?
No.
Mayor Protem Betts?
Mayor Protem Betts, you're on, you're on mute.
No.
And Mayor Mattis?
Hi. I, go ahead, Ms. Turner.
Motion passed with Councilmember Nunes and Mayor Protem Betts opposed.
Thank you very much. It's all we have on the agenda tonight. Everybody stays safe. We should hopefully be back to in-person meetings next month if everything clears up in City Hall. We'll keep you in, in the loop on that. Enjoy any vacation time that you have. Again, be safe out there. I do want to announce, I was going to wait till September to do this, but the funeral services will be sooner than that. My first wife introduced me to Frank Cabrera, who was a thirty-year volunteer firefighter, South County Fire, who got me involved in being a volunteer for twenty years. He passed on the twelfth due to a stroke. He, she was moved and lived with his daughter in Vierterville. There's going to be a funeral service for him, limited space, but I thought it should be noted from the city of Desert Hot Springs, because he spent a twenty-five of his years up here in Desert Hot Springs volunteering with the city of Desert Hot Springs. So I thought it'd be nice. We'll take a moment of silence for him when he come back in September, and we'll make the official announcement there. But I thought that some of you might want to know, if anybody that's watching might have ran into Frank sometime in their lifetime here. He spent, I believe, over forty years here in Desert Hot Springs. So it's an unfortunate situation, but I wanted to give kudos to what he did for our community. So we'll come back and say more in, in September. Don't want to leave it on a somber note, so I apologize, but I did think it was important to announce. With that said, we will adjourn the meeting, and we'll see you in September. Can be safe out there.
Bye, everybody.